The special call meeting for Friday, February second, two thousand and twenty four to order. Two items on the agenda. We'll start with item number one, approval of renewal of resolution declaring the local state of emergency due to Hurricane Adelia. Questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Commissioner Hale, motions, Commissioner Perkins, second, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three, zero. Item number two, adoption of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to submit grant applications for grants that do not have match requirements. Mr. Scott?
This is regarding the rural infrastructure grants. They want something specific that that gives us authority to apply and anything else, Shannon?
No, it's just from time to time, a lot of these grant agencies, if the board chairman isn't signing the application submission, they want some type of document that articulates who's in power to do it. And this becomes actually a tool to make it easier for us.
Yeah, and it's not, it says there does not have match requirements, so technically there's no budget impact to these types of applications.
The thing too, always when we get grants that we apply for, they always come back to the commission to accept the grants. Mr. Scott, was there a warning?
Yeah, and those go across on the agenda for execution of the grant, whatever.
Right.
Acceptance of da, 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 da.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions by commissioners?
Uh, some rule.
Got a commission, uh, motion by Commissioner Perkins, second, by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three, zero. Any other business, Mr. Scott?
Just want to bring up today real quick on a few, a few items. Uh, three guys are wrapped up. I got an email yesterday from DOT that, uh, they were, they were done. Um, and I talked to Levi yesterday, or day before, and he said he'd be glad to leave a truck back just in case we need to do something.
Need to.
Um, I got one I need to give you before we leave.
Okay.
That didn't mean they're up.
No, that's fine.
We are addressing a, a local, um, tree service likes to keep putting their stuff on the right way and, and we're calling them that they can get this stuff. Okay?
Uh, non-related hurricane stuff, fresh too.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, in our construction area. Um, and we've got a, an ongoing problem with beavers, uh, at one thirty six A. Uh, we found some, some tunneling that goes under, under the road, some were pumping grout in that last night. And, uh, we'll need Mike out there and just reevaluate that. Locklear looked at that at one time, made some recommendations, and we kind of put it on pause, just thought we thought was okay for a minute. Um, anyway, we'll revisit that, so we'll be working on that. But, um, you know, F W C says that, that beavers don't burrow, but we got a tunnel where you stick your head through it and crawl up in it. Uh, I think somebody did this bird in. So, um, so anyway, we're working on that. Um, the, um, just side note, the, uh, general information on the bridge at, uh, one eightieth was opened on Monday. Um, the citizens seemed to be very pleased that it was open. Um, there's a fence and I got a text message or a voicemail yesterday from DOT. I talked to them a couple days before. There's a fence that they thought they had to replace and they forgot about to then have an instrument in the grant to do that. The accompaniment process is probably thirty foot. And I said, we can take care of that if we need to.
Just like a field fence or barbed wire or something simple?
Well, just a field fence. So, but we're gonna work out details. I just wanted you to be aware of that. Um.
Replace the fence or a bridge any day?
Right. Yeah, especially the value that. Um, talked to Adam yesterday and, uh, the, um, later in the afternoon, the, um, appraisal for the fire station is coming back low. Uh, so just so y'all are aware of that, we'll be addressing that Tuesday. Um, and, uh, he said low three or high threes, low fours. Um, so in the language of the appraisal, there will be some subverbage about, um, you know, it's a unique situation which is hard to do an appraisal on that kind of structure.
Like some intrinsic value type for the end user maybe?
Right. And, and also because of it being a church, it's like people don't buy churches every day. So it's hard to have a comparison.
Comp.
Right, right. Makes sense. So anyway, so that's, that's on radar. Uh, Eric can correct me, but my understanding is you can go over the appraisal values if you got a super majority.
Yeah, by certain percentage or something, I think.
Right. So just put that on the radar. You can digest that. We don't have the appraisal back yet. Uh, hopefully we got it by, by Tuesday so you can look at that. If you get it earlier, I'll get it out to you as soon as we get it. Um, but, uh, just, you know, make sure it's on your radar. Um.
Did the, who did the, who did the appraisal? Do you recall, around Lake City?
At Lake City, right, Moses.
Okay.
All right, well, it was Moses and, um.
Camera.
Camera.
Right, right.
Um, and, um, yesterday or a couple days ago, I was talking to Brenda and Shannon, and we've got a couple of projects going on. And, uh, I said, you know, it'd be interesting to just look at this and how many we've got going. So, uh, Brenda and Shannon said yesterday and made a list of that. And I just wanted them to bring it to y'all's attention today. Um, let y'all be aware of what we got going on. Um, and also wanted to have one of them come or both of them come on Tuesday and present to the public too. But, um, who wants to share?
Uh, they're both looking at each other.
So, so just Shannon predominantly writes the grants that we've got. Um, Brenda is our project manager handling all these projects. Uh, obviously there's other pieces that, you know, Mandy helps Shannon helps. There's, you know, Mike Gamble's been a huge asset for us, uh, been underutilized for years. Uh, a lot of knowledge there, so.
Teamwork.
I'll, I'll hush let you talk, Brenda.
So just a snapshot is, is what Greg mentioned that we might want to give you. So currently we're managing about thirty million dollars worth of projects. Um, that's active projects now. That doesn't include what we've asked for, what we think is coming, but.
Money's received, grants received.
Yes. So that's just me and Shannon. That's not including parks and rec, library, anybody else. So what you're talking about is utilities and transportation. What we're seeing coming down the pipe, what we're anticipating within the next year or so is going to be around a hundred million dollars that we are managing. Uh, Shannon, you want to rattle off the six things that we're, that that encompasses?
So, once you get a grant, that's when the real work starts. You have to manage the procurement of it, the contract management components, the financial components, the auditing components, the reporting components.
Compliance.
And the compliance components. So one grant, regardless of how much, has six things that are going on underneath it the entire time.
Plus the work itself.
Yeah, yeah. This, this has nothing to do with the work that's out on the site getting done. This is just the backend to make sure you do what's required to do, to get the money spent the right way and not have any issues. And let everybody know that, that wants to know I was going.
And that doesn't, go ahead.
Well, we, what, how many grants do we have right now? Thirteen?
Thirteen.
So that thirty million dollars is tied up into thirteen documents that each has six components of them that has to be done. By the time we get done later in the year, thirteen is gonna grow north of twenty probably, almost to thirty. So thirty, you know, six things for each one, times six, uh, times thirty, that's ninety things you're juggling all the time with at, at that level. And if we're managing, working on, taking care of a hundred million dollars, that's, that's the size of the county budget.
Do we, uh?
Just for road and infrastructure.
And that doesn't include the grants that we've already completed work and we're going to be reporting on for ten years.
Yeah.
So those, that's just kind of a, a side note, but I mean, it's a, it's a lot going on, but we're in a really good, uh, place as far as that kind of problem. I mean, it's a lot of work, but it's a great thing for the county.
Yeah, I think that, that, I mean, you said it, and, you know, we can just attribute that to everybody in this room.
Absolutely.
You know, Shannon, you, Mandy, I mean, and, and others, Mike, and.
Jimmy, Carissa, everybody.
And Simon and Choe, and, you know, our partners in Tallahassee, and the commissioners, every one of them, you know, participating, going up there like rural county days a couple weeks ago. And, and lobbying, our representatives at that level that have the deeper pockets to help get some of that funding back in Swan County to benefit, you know, our citizens. So that's all to you guys.
And I agree with everything Commissioner Lance said. Everyone has, it seems to me we all have a common vision here now. There, there's no division, there's no, uh, roadblocks, if you will. And I just, I appreciate all of that.
Yeah, everybody's pulling in the same direction for the betterment of the entire community. And, and I think the people on the street see it. I mean, I, I hear, I hear it often that they are, I mean, of course, you can't make everyone happy, but for the most part, I think a lot of folks are appreciative of what the county staff is, is doing. And they see the, the return from Tallahassee coming back this way. And, and I think that we, you get that when there's cohesiveness and everybody pulling in the same direction and working together in Tallahassee, with Tallahassee, to make things nice. So thank, I just like, like all y'all. And I'll say that again Tuesday, so it sounds like I'm repeating myself, but, you know, it's a little more, um.
It was heartfelt.
It really was. A little more, um, whatever the word is, environment here to be a little more.
So, so y'all want to get better at work?
[laughing] It sounds like, in all seriousness, that from July, budget workshops, we need to start talking about some additional staff, Mr. Scott. I mean, those, those, Shannon, they can't keep juggling, you know, that, those kind of monies with, like you said, six components and then the reporting and that stuff doesn't go away for years to come. I mean, you know, and, and we, we certainly don't want to mess that up by not, by not doing something properly and then the grant gets revoked or, or, you know, we get into hot water. We want to continue to, to get that money and then.
A lot of the times.
We flew through the whole process so that we're not messing it up, but I mean, that, those, they're human. They can't do this anymore.
Well, just, just this past week or so, you know, there's been four different things we've had to hammer out quickly. Or I say we, they, um, but, um.
Well, and that means they hit the pause button on everything else that they're already working on.
And that's the thing, we're, we're juggling deadlines on things and trying to make it, make everybody happy at the same time, which, um, but.
We're not gonna do that good look.
No.
I've tried.
The thing I'm really most proud of is the way that we're working beyond, we don't have silos, you know? What, what economic realment has done in the past and, and we're all things forward, you know, it, it excites me that when Brenda or Shannon or whoever goes down to their office and they don't need me because they know they've got to be okay to just move forward. Um, they keep me informed, but, you know, we don't need hold hands. You know, we got, we got grown people doing great work and, um.
Well, you pay, pay people and let them do their job. Get some rope, let them go. And then you'll see them, usually see them grow, so.
Yeah, I just think the same with, I guess, you know, like the atmosphere in the departments now has changed tremendously. That people now feel more worthy and not being micromanaging, told this and want to know everything. You don't dig into all their businesses prior to what they've done. And so now they've got the freedom to do whatever they do. Yeah, y'all, I was thinking too about that. That's what I just do. Y'all got a lot going on, but we don't know what to do to help y'all. Just tell what y'all need to do to help y'all make y'all apartment even more efficient. Some more people you need, more staffing. That's a lot of work doing on those dreads. Because if you don't keep everything in line and you keep all that stuff up, you have a focus on you or all of you and all that.
That's right.
You got a lot, a lot to deal with.
The biggest, the biggest thing the commission has done for us is let us do our job and support us. And that's the thing, when y'all are going to Tallahassee or conferences together, you show unity, you show power. Other folks are jealous of what, what is being accomplished because other counties are looking over their shoulder saying, you got five here? You know, what, what y'all are doing has been pretty darn impressive. Um, but, um, it's because we're all heading in the same direction, you know?
I was talking to Greg yesterday and I, something just hit me. I think what we've really been doing, I would, I didn't kind of see it till yesterday, we've been repairing and restoring and creating a great culture that hasn't been here in a while. And it shows on so many levels. It shows with the unity of the leaders. You mentioned, hey, we got a vision. We've all bought into it. All that's a sign of a growing and healthy culture where people collaborate, they work with each other instead of guard their own interests or be secretive or whatever. I mean, hey, that goes a long way because when folks feel good, they feel safe, they feel like, I, I'm convinced we probably have more people out there that can be involved in what we're doing with great ideas and contributions. They've just never been asked. They've never felt like they could do that. I, I'm excited to see. I don't think this is done yet. I think we're just gonna keep snowballing this thing where it, it's gonna get maybe even bigger and more creative than we ever thought could be. And, and that's exciting to me. It's also rewarding and fulfilling because you feel like you do something that matters.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, and I'm very appreciative of that.
You have to record what you're doing and see the effect and results. I mean, I appreciate it. I know Jimmy, his department ran a lot of flavor too, but I've been doing too in there, you know? I know it's created by two Carissa, but, you know, but, um, you know, he has, he knows a lot of people that, well, he knows a lot of people up there that, that kind of puts them in a lot of, give it a read with, with things, you know? So it, 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 I see a different flavor throughout the whole department. And I would think by maybe having, maybe have a, maybe a family day for all departments.
Yeah.
Keep them out.
One, 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 a little bit of something maybe.
You know, you.
Secretary day, you know, get to our secretaries and all that, you know? And I was talking to, uh, Chief Hand, oh, yesterday, his department, you know, how he had done, his department had turned around a whole lot. Atmosphere's changed out there, you know? You see it's all the group, they all go out all the departments. And, uh, these people, you got folks out loud that, that come to us, while you're leaving advertise, while people ain't calling and asking about joining this group because they hear it out in the streets and, you know, they like the atmosphere to work in, you know?
Well, and that's what I was gonna add to what Shannon was saying with the culture thing. It's, it's been amazing to me how fast it's, it's, it's taken off.
Yeah.
Because I've been working four years and within our department to, to change that culture. And it's, and it's, and it's been moving, but it was at a snail's pace of, of, of moving. And now I'm having, you know, some of my, my younger guys coming to me, chief, can I sit down and talk with you? I have a presentation of some stuff I think will make us, make us better. I had one yesterday, I mean, they're putting PowerPoints together for me to sit down and, and say, you know, hey, this is, you know, this is something I think we could do that. And some of it is, is great ideas, but it's slightly, you know, budgetary things that, that may take some time to implement, but some of it's little things that just, they, they see that they, and, and, and that excites me to, to have those guys being able to find, you know, feel like they, you know, because I've been working on it for four years, get them to feel comfortable enough to do stuff like that, empower them to come to me with ideas and none of them ever would. But that's what's impressed me about at county level, how fast it's rolling, you know? It's really.
Well, and that, and that's, again, that's the culture and the environment. You're not an employee now, you're a team member, you know?
That's right.
And you have, you know, what you have to say is appreciated, you know? And, and I know I gotta tell you guys in here, but that's, that's something that's been lacking for a long time. And, and any business, it will hurt a business too.
Yeah, it's just.
Sure.
Yeah. Sometimes you don't know what you don't have until you, until you have something different. And just, uh, for me, the, the thing makes me most proud is watching the employees succeed, you know, and us as a county succeed. I tell people, I don't need to get any more feathers in my hair dress.
Right.
It's not about me. It's about watching this team work together and just blow it out of the world. If they feel appreciated and they feel like they're part of the team, and I've been doing this management people a long time, the productivity though just goes sky high.
That's right.
And, and you want that. That's what you want. You don't want somebody that has, you know, a hit, a talent or maybe a great idea that's just gonna sit there and hold that in because they don't feel like it's gonna go anywhere or no one's listening or cares. So I appreciate everyone, y'all, every department.
Absolutely.
Probably need to tell all the rest of the departments to lie here all the way through. So a lot of good things going on right now. That's awesome.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we, we, we'll need to repeat this Tuesday so that some of the other, I mean, we have a lot of employees that.
That's right.
That don't watch these, I mean, we're being recorded now, it'll be on the internet. We got a lot of folks that don't watch this, that, that work for the county, have worked for the county for a long time. So, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but, you know, we'll need to repeat that Tuesday for those that are in attendance that won't watch the video or won't hear it because I think it's important, um, that they do hear and they are an important part of it. And their creative thinking is an asset to the county, no matter what role they play at the county. Like Commissioner Hale says, they're a team member. And like Commissioner Perkins says, I mean, you know, those employees are your biggest assets. Like, you know, they not only use the analogy of raising kids, but like as a parent, the best thing you can do is raise a good child. As an employer, the best thing you can do is have foster good employee, employees and good employee relations, build, develop those slopes so that they're, you know, you want to see.
Take your job.
That, yeah, well, yeah, exactly. They take your job and at some point they move up or they move on and they move up and better themselves. Well, you know what? Good for them because they weren't able to do that if it weren't for their employer or where they were at previously fostering them and, and helping develop them into better people, better, you know, better citizens, no matter where they may go. Even if they leave our county and go to another. But, you know, I think that in the last year or so, that whole live, work, play analogy is, is our folks are buying into it. And, you know, we all care about this community deeply. Sure, we all make mistakes and we're gonna continue to make them. There's gonna be bumps in the road, but, you know, we're, everybody in here, like we said, the employee thing, we're all human. We put our britches on every morning the same way as the next guy. And, um, just appreciative of everybody pulling, pulling hard and pulling in the same direction and sharing their views and sharing their visions so that everybody can feed off, off of that and, and hopefully end up in a better direction. Because it's not about my direction or Perkins's direction or Taylor's direction. It's about, or wider model who are on here today, but everybody's sharing, sharing that. And, and hopefully, my way may not be the right way, but together, me and Perkins talk about it in the meeting combined, it should be a better way. You know, so I think we have that and I'm just overwhelmingly appreciative.
And one thing I really appreciate, we sell this and we need to. I've always used the term, you know, since I've been in office, I mean, we want growth, but we need responsible growth. And that's one thing, like you say, when we all have our meetings and, and we get to talking and, and I can pick up on you guys, you know, even if Mr. Perkins is down here and you might be over here, we want to see Swan County grow, but we don't want to outgrow our riches, if you will.
Right.
I know. I mean, we know, I think we all have a good sense of, and, and these guys, this, this is where we get that information from, you know, is, is in what areas do we need to grow in? Maybe some quicker than others, maybe some not as fast. And, you know, we don't want to upset, you know, the community, but we want to provide, if we can, the services and the things that they need. And that's, it is a hard thing to juggle guys.
Well, you know, like you said, it's, it's a big circle. So you want to provide those jobs and, and that, that responsible growth. And we're focusing on our interchanges, which I think ninety-nine percent of the community is, is excited about growing at the interchanges so it's not sprawled out all over the county. So that's what this board has focused on, is growing at the interchanges, which I think is responsible on our part because that, those two interstates are some of the biggest unrealized assets that our county has, um, going through here. But, um, I lost my train of thought with that radio going on over there.
But you're right, we're sticking to what we, we need to be done first. But the thing of things too, that, look at our other partners too. Partners we, we developed with our agencies, DOT, you know, DM, DP, you know, Commerce, certainly, um, they're helping us, but we've allowed them the culture to let, let them help us. And also our consultants, our engineers and architects and things that's working with us, um, having options is, is good. Um, I know that, you know, sometimes people don't understand why we need to have several, but, um, it's a good thing. It, it's watching, you know, it takes a little pressure off of some and, and spreads on somebody else and.
Well, you get, there, it goes back to that diversity. You get that diversity of ideas, even though you, you may be talking about engineers or architects or surveyors or contractors, whoever they be. I mean, each one of those brings different ideas to the table. So when you're spreading that around, you're not, you know, on a rabbit trail with just one, you know, one team and one team's ideas, you know, you're kind of getting it. But back to what I'm saying, is that, that big circle, you know? Swan County is growing, residentially, commercially, but it's our job, I feel like, as, as staff and, and the board to, as we grow, the demand on our services increases. Well, if we're not growing that tax base, you know, with Brendan, Shannon and the grants and the, and Jimmy, um, and, and everybody, I don't like calling names, but, you know, we are sitting here. So we have to grow that commercial side of things to add to the tax base, which helps increase our level of service, whether it be fire and rescue or sheriff's office or whatnot, back to the people. So I think we're doing a good, a good job of that and focusing on those interchanges and trying to grow that tax base, um, which indirectly betters our services down to the individual citizen living in Hale's district or Perkins zip or Gorm Ramford. And so, you know, as that back base grows.
Well, those are the things.
It, it's a big circle.
It is.
It, it's, it's good to see that the thing that we're looking at, we're not looking for, we're not just building for the day, we're building for the future. And we're putting things in place that this will be going on later on that there's room to do things for the future that, and then like building the, like I said, the base, the grids, I remember I built that base, that people see the, the goodness of us here as a board and as a county. And we can get all the money, we can get in here, but we don't have these departments to do the work we need done to make Swan County look good. These folks, they don't want to come and be a part of here. So every, in that, everybody's working together, everybody want to come in and be a part of, you know, the departments working together, the money coming in, we're using that money to build, build things in the community that people like and, uh, making Swan County better.
Absolutely.
And so people come in, want to be a part of, you know? So I like that.
Greg, I think you agree with us. I think DOT and some of the folks that, that all of us deal with and, and talk with, trying to get some of these, these grant funds. And Jimmy, I know you know this, I mean, when they see all of us working hand in hand, they see us in harmony and doing the things that we're supposed to be doing, that captures their attention.
Well, the worst thing you can have is have controversy within your leadership at the county level because that makes the last year, whomever it is, a little more resistance to send money that way to make sure that, you know, because they're gonna be, it's gonna be questionable. All right, we're sending it for this reason. How's that gonna go? But if everybody's on board, pulling in the same direction, they're, they're not as hesitant to, to, to send that away, send that down the pipe and get a project done. Thank y'all, everyone.
But we want to make sure the departments are, the agencies are successful too.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, because I got skin in the game, it's a reflection on them.
But the thing to remember is this, their job to give us money. And it is our job to take it.
It is. And it's our job to make sure that that project goes the way that we told them that it would go, the way that we promised them that it would go. So that, so that's a reflection back on them.
If it's success, it's success.
Exactly. So I think we're doing a good job of doing that.
That's right. Shifting gears, um, we got a, the other night we got an email, um, about one of our appropriations we thought, a couple of our, our appropriation and one that the sheriff put in got jammed up together and they got split back out. And we got a request from the governor's office to give us more information about the communications. We asked for three million dollar appropriation for radios and support for, you know, first responders, everybody so we can communicate during storms. Um, and whether it include public works, parks, everybody. Um, but Shannon worked on that yesterday and, and also Chief's guys too. Chief might have done a little bit, I don't know, but, um.
Probably ten, I don't know.
Probably just like ten.
I was there three hours.
But, um, anyway.
Learned a lot.
They were working on that. Then we got another email yesterday from, uh, Chris Doolin, which his name was added to the one the sheriff put in. Sheriff and I had a conversation about that, but anyway, the, um, the, um, but anyway, the. but anyway, they, they needed information on their, their piece too. So they're just split out so they can answer their own questions. So.
Good to.
But, um, good stuff.
Good deal. So those two got split back out and are both in play, is the way that I read?
Right.
That's good.
Yes.
Anything else? Anybody? Chief, Eddie Shannon?
Good.
Hey, Jimmy? My cousin Benny?
No one's got anything else, but I will offer a motion to a jury.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.